Not on a personal basis, but for the city of Troutwood, we ask that you guide us and lead us in order our steps this evening. Lord, I pray for the people that are in this room and those that are on the way and those that are actually looking at us online, that their households be covered and taken care of. As we progress into this next phase in the city of Troutwood, we want to thank you, Lord, because without you we wouldn't be here. So in Jesus' name, I pray and thank you. Amen. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gales?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Finley is unable to attend tonight's meeting and is respectfully requesting an excused absence.
Okay, she's excused. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have not heard from Councilwoman Vaughn. I'm not sure of his attendance this evening.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Page?
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. May I have a motion to move, to enter into executive session? Could you please read...
The Troutwood City Council will move into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22G3 of the Ohio Revice Code, which allows for discussion with an attorney for the public body concerning pending or imminent court action.
So I pass for a motion to move into executive session? I move to enter into executive session for the reasons stated.
Second. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. We will be moving into executive session. Thank you so much. You showed up though, ma'am. Thank you so much.
I make a motion to adjourn from this executive session.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Karen, do we have any public comments, please?
Yes ma'am, we do. We have Estella Crews. She is here to speak about neighborhood conditions.
Ms. Crews, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Page and panel. I'm here to talk about our neighborhood conditions or some of our neighborhood conditions.
I have a question to ask you, so could you state your name and address? Is that wrong, ma'am? You're not Francis, okay?
Yes ma'am. My name is Estella Crews. I reside and own 4434 Redondo Lane.
The floor is yours, yes?
The floor is mine, thank you. What I would like to know is what more can be done about the upkeep of properties for both businesses and residential? Around our neighborhoods, there are car and auto repair shops. And they're down on the streets. There are dealerships going on from their homes. There's tall grass that's unkept in yards with tire debris and trash cans being left out from week to week. And when the wind blows, we get it, we have to pick it up. Let's see, right now, oh, also in burning trash. One of our neighbors is burning trash. There are, let's see, oh, at the stores, that's another subject. The vehicles are parked in the fire lanes where they shouldn't be. So is there anything that we can do to keep the businesses, to keep the people out of the fire lanes? And right now, currently, myself and my neighbors, we're dealing with a duck and chicken problem. The police was called, one of my neighbors called the police. I put in a report. I don't know what the ordinance is or are for having fowl in a residential neighborhood. And these ducks and chickens are running amok. They're eating our neighbor's gardens. And every five minutes, I'm jumping out from my seat, I'm 71 years old, disability, and I can't continue to run to the door worrying about chickens and ducks in my yards dropping, they're droppings, and possibly creating a mental hazard for myself. So those are the few things that I can remember that I try to jot down and see if there's anything that can be done about this disturbance in our neighborhood.
You had a plate for it right there.
I know. And it's, you know, it's like Green Acres in my neighborhood right now. The chickens and the ducks continue to get out. And the young lady, I called, I knocked on her door, I didn't know that she would come to the door. Called the police, I called wildlife. I was told that animal control wanted to come out after dogs. So that's the major problem right now. But I've also reported tall grass in the neighborhood. It seems that they all cut one property but not another. The properties are empty or bad.
Well, when I look at what you're bringing to the council tonight, first of all, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Because if we don't know, we can't help you.
Yes.
But the first thing that comes to my mind would be code enforcement.
Yes ma'am.
And what I would like to do is turn in, City Mayor, if you can also help me with that. That would be the first step. And I would think Max Fuller would be the gentleman that you would talk to. And he's present here, so you may want to talk with him after we set up an appointment. But I'm glad you came to let us know. We wouldn't have known anything unless you had come forward.
You know, a lot of the, like I said, about the cars and the...
As far as code enforcement.
Yes. And something more can be done about this because I think some neighborhood really looking at it. You know, I live in a decent neighborhood. And then we have people coming in, changing tires, working on brakes, selling cars and other things, you know, so.
Ms. Crews, I appreciate you coming out. Max Fuller and with code enforcement. And we're trying to help you with that, okay?
And so Max Willard.
Fuller, F-U-L-L-A-R. Is that not correct, Max? Can you lay your hand for us?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, you're more than welcome. Thank you, sweetheart.
Madam Mayor, Joanne Orieth is here to speak about neighborhood disturbances.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council members, citizens. I've come to complain tonight.
Well, Joanne, tell us your full name and your address.
Joanne Orieth, 14 Oak Street in Troutwood. We have a situation on Worley. About a block from the end of the street at West Worley. There's a vacant lot there that I believe belongs to the city. And some children who live across the street have taken that to use. And they are riding their two-wheel electric and gas bikes. They've made a racetrack. And so now we go round and round and round for a half hour or more. There's two to four bikes on a regular basis. And sometimes there's visitors that have even larger bikes. I can hear it from my property, which I did hear on Memorial Day, and that was disturbing. They've called again to the police, but it continues. So I don't know what can be done. I don't feel that that's the right place for that type of activity in the city. So I wanted to bring it to your attention because the neighbors have become really frustrated with it. There are elderly people that live down there as well as people that work at night. So they need to sleep during the day. And that is just very disturbing for them.
I just want to make sure for the record, that's on West Worley Street?
Yes.
Okay, and it's a vacant lot, and you do believe we own it. That would be something that we will have to look into actually if we do own the property. But you've been heard, and we'll take it to code enforcement and also check the records of if it's, when it was reported to the police department, too.
I know they've reported it quite a few times on a regular basis, so.
Well, thank you for coming forward. We really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, Vicki Nelson is here to speak about semi parking.
My name is Vicki Nelson. I live toward East Main Street, 38 years. In a light home in Troutwood. Wouldn't go anywhere else if I didn't have to. I was at a customer picking up a load and I was telling the driver behind me how I was kicked out of my neighborhood, cut my truck. And this lady gave me this paper, and she said, "Maybe you need to read this to them." It says, "I am a truck driver. I am no different from you. The only difference is you have to go home to your family every night while I am delivering the goods that you're feeling in my need. So stop treating those truck drivers like criminals. Our job is hard enough without the adage unnecessary ruiners. I have my truck parked at Devers. My semi truck has been parked in that lot for 25 years. Charlie paid him to give me permission to park in that lot. That's how long I've been there. The drivers that you're seeing, these trucks you're seeing are members of the community. There's no one coming on Saturday to park their truck. If you're seeing a truck parked in Troutwood, they live here. And truck are average, average pay, $67,000 a year. They're not strained on resources because we're not here. I'm here on the weekends. Sometimes I'm gone a month at a time. I want to come home. I want to spend time with my children and my grandchildren. And it's kind of really hard right now because I can't find a place to park. find a place to park. Now I talked to zoning, and they had told me to develop a parking spot. And I don't know about you, but I'm an old hippie. And there's a song that says, "Why tear down paradise and build another parking lot?" There's parking lots everywhere. We don't need anything fancy, just like Devers, just pull in and park at the hole. There's no drivers that, um, as Joe Biden would say, has eighth grade educations. These are drivers that are college educated. They're not criminals. They're just coming home to spend time with their families. As I drive around, um, a lot of concern was the roads. And sometimes I think that people don't really check into things, but the city buses are heavier than a semi with an empty trailer. And most of the roads is residential roads. I just picked my granddaughter up at the junior high today, and I thought, man, the roads are awful in the residential neighborhoods. But trucks don't go there. I do believe that we should not be parking in residential neighborhoods, and that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking that if we have permission from a business, which I did have permission from Devers to park there, that we should be able to park, just so we can go home like everybody else. Now, everybody will say, well, all the other cities, well, I don't know about you, but I've been to Troutwood all my life, but we have something very special that other communities don't have. We have a diversity in our community of love for each other. I was walking here talking to somebody, I didn't know who they were, but we're talking like we're old friends here. You're not going to get that in Eaglewood. You're not going to get that in Hoover Heights. When Isaiah blew his hand off, I walked into the hospital room, and I was surrounded by community members that were there to encourage him. Kim, you know, she owns that subway, and she gets a lot of businesses from the schools and whatever. Yeah, this is my community, and I don't want to go anywhere else. But my truck currently is a hundred miles away. I have to leave tonight to drive up there just to get it, to come back down here, go to Mason, pick up a load, and go to Virginia. That's four hours of my day that I could spend more time with my family. So I'm just asking, I looked around for places that I thought the city might want to consider. Um, concern was not only the roads, but the buses are heavier than the semis, but also parking lots. The junior high has a huge parking lot. It's out of, you can't see it. It's outside. It's out of the way. Drivers could pull in there. There's not that many of us in Troutwood, but just maybe someplace to park. Okay?
Ms. Nelson, first of all, Ms. Nelson.
Yeah.
Thank you for being a Troutwood citizen of over thirty years.
Of my life.
Your life. And we appreciate that. And we're taking into consideration. I've heard another part of this, too. So let us discuss this. I'll discuss it with the city manager, and, uh, we'll, we'll get back with you.
Well, I know that it's not, I talked to zoning, and his solution was for me to develop a parking lot for trucks. Don't get it. There's all these parking lots here. They're already here. You've just got to pick one. And know that the way the junior high would support the weight of the trucks. It would not tear it up because it supported the buses. And it's out of the way. So everybody would say, oh, you know, all the semis are here, but nobody would know.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
Madam Mayor, Melanie White is here to speak about Wi-Fi service and lot splits.
She didn't make it.
She didn't make it. Okay. She didn't make it this evening. Those are all the public comments we have here.
Right now, we have special presentations and recommendations.
PR twenty dash twenty-four, Troutwood Library Branch Manager, Yumi Hampson, is here to share information about the library's summer programs.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Yumi Hampson, and I'm the branch manager of the Troutwood Library. So the kids are out of school, and the weather is warmer, so that means it's time for the Day Master Library Summer Challenge Program. The challenge runs from June first to July first, but if you haven't signed up yet, don't worry. It's okay. You can still sign up. In fact, you can sign up anytime between now and July thirty-first. And you can sign up online through the library's website, or you can come into the branch, say hi to us, and sign up with us. Children ages zero to eighteen years can sign up online, um, and you can receive a free tracker and a bookmark. At, um, fifteen days of activities, kids will win a free book that they can take home and keep. Thirty days, they get another book. And at forty-five days, they win a library tote bag. And this is just a reading challenge for the kids, um, because I know not every, even though I would love everyone to love to read, not everybody does. Um, so you can get points for learning a new activity, um, helping someone do something, exploring something. So this is just about like keeping kids active, motivated, and learning throughout the summer. Uh, that said, adults this year are really excited because we're doing an adult summer challenge. We have a bingo card for adults this year. So adults, come sign up. Um, you guys don't get to win free books, but if you complete five boxes on the bingo card, you can win a bag of library swag and free books and DVDs, and you'll be entered into a system-wide contest to win four Kings Island tickets. And just one final note, the library is also hosting, uh, free lunches this summer until August second, from eleven to noon at the library, Monday through Friday. So anybody, uh, under eighteen can come in and get a free lunch. That's all I have for today.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And, uh, you get that info, uh, information to Karen, so we can also put it on the website. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
PR twenty-one dash twenty-four, Marketing Coordinator, Charles Wheeler, will share details about the upcoming community movie night.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. As mentioned by Karen, we do have a community movie night that the city would like to host at John Wolf Park. It is going to be a movie in the park. Um, the movie will begin at eight-thirty PM on Friday, June the fourteenth. That is next Friday. Um, and the movie does begin, as I mentioned, at eight-thirty, which is just roughly dusk. Um, so it may be a little bit later than eight-thirty. Um, and we have partnered with the Boy Scouts of America, Troop Forty-four, here in Troutwood. Um, they're a part of Phillips Temple Church, and they're going to keep providing us with concessions. So they'll have a popcorn machine set up there, um, other snacks for individuals to purchase. It's a fundraising opportunity for them, and then also an amenity for us to add to this community movie night.
Oh, that's interesting. This sounds good. You chose the movie.
Exactly. We'll be showing Kung Fu Panda Four. Sorry about that.
What is it now?
Kung Fu Panda Four.
Okay.
And the flyers are out in the lobby area as well, along with other events that we have coming up for the summer.
We can move on to PR twenty-two dash twenty-four. Marketing Coordinator, Charles Wheeler, will show us the steps to reserve a park shelter using the online portal.
Historically, our park shelter reservations have been just on paper. Um, individuals go into the Public Works Department, and they write down an application to get their park shelter reserved. But now we have emulated, um, a park shelter reservation through GovPilot. And if you look up at the screen, we're going to navigate to, to that. Um, individuals can access the park shelter reservation either by going to our Parks and Recreation page or the Public Works page. Um, and we'll go ahead and navigate to that, just so everyone can see. From Public Works, you want to look at the left-hand side of the screen. There's two options. You can do Parks and Facilities, or you can do Park Shelter Reservations. There can be Parks and Facilities. There is going to be an extra step within there where you will have to click that blue hyperlink at the top, um, where it says to reserve a park shelter, complete the online application, and play applicable fees here. And then you click on that, and that does take you to the actual application. Once upon the application, individuals can select the location. So that will either be John Wolf Park, Madison Park, North Broadway Park. And, um, from that point on, they can go in and select the date of their event, put in the event description, whether it's a birthday party, family reunion, et cetera, um, and all of the required information. Once you have submitted your application, there is a process where we will go back in on the backside, and we will approve the application provided that there is no other applicants reserved on that day. Um, after which, we will go ahead and send a payment link to the individual. They can pay online with a card. Um, we do still allow them to come into the Public Works facility if they would like. But this is just more seamless for our residents and allows them the trip, uh, to save the trip of coming in to reserve something like this. Thank you.
Any questions, council? Now we're to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second. Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. May I have a motion to open the public hearings?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second. Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Are there any comments on the public hearings?
Madam Mayor, no one has signed up for public hearings. Um, so I don't know if you want to go through anything on standing up, or, okay, we can square them in if somebody wants to.
We just want to go straight to the ordinances at the beginning.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. O R oh seven dash twenty-four, an ordinance by the Troutwood City Council repealing current section nine-two-seven-point-one-zero, charges and collection delinquent bills of the Troutwood Codes of Ordinances, and enacting new section nine-two-seven-point-one-zero, charges and collection delinquent bills discount, to provide a discount for refuse collection to certain residents.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This ordinance would allow us to offer a discount, twenty percent discount to our seniors in this community. Uh, we've been evaluating the inflation and looking at ways that we can mitigate that with our seniors. We're kind of utilizing the same model of metrics that the homestead, uh, utilizes for property taxes, which would mean that if you're sixty-five or older, if you permanently are disabled, totally disabled, totally disabled, a military veteran receives a hundred percent disability. And I have an income over thirty-eight thousand six hundred, and must be sixty-five by September thirty-first, and own your home as of January first of the year of your application, then you will qualify for twenty percent discount when you reference the city of Troutwood. So we're asking this board, uh, tonight to approve this ordinance, and, uh, so that we can begin offering that kind of discount to our seniors.
Council, are there any questions? I'm sorry, council, Vaughn?
When you mentioned discount, what percentage?
Twenty percent.
Two-zero?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And the qualifying is age?
Yes, sir.
And homeownership?
Yes, sir.
Have you done any study to consider what is the overall impact to the community as far as general revenue being lost, uh, and the cost being carried by other taxpayers?
Yes, sir. We have. I have that right in front. I'm glad you asked that question. Right now, about fifteen percent participation over households, due back, that's about twelve-hundred-four households. Uh, so at twenty-five, that would mean about forty-seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars. In twenty-twenty-six, it'd be about fifty thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars. If seventy percent of the people participate in the city of Troutwood, which would mean that would be, uh, one thousand two hundred fifty-one households, that would mean forty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety dollars seventy-five cent. And twenty-six, that would be fifty-two thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and five cents. So right now, not everybody's even participating. So you have a fifteen percent. So we also look at if everybody participates.
And any delinquent people, do we have that, they're not paying for their trash collection?
I know.
Do you have a delinquency percentage today?
No, I don't have a delinquency percentage in front of me today.
Do you believe that this would increase the delinquency, and that what we're not getting anyway, we're not going to give away?
I don't think so. I don't think it will. I think, I think as a matter of fact, I've taken several complaints of some of our seniors coming in that, uh, when the rates were increased on them, they only, they are on fixed incomes, and they've been coming in and seeing me about four or five dollars difference in their bills, and saying they can't pay. And so, uh, they're saying that if we were able to do something like this, they would be able to meet their, they'd be able to pay their bill. So I think it'd probably help us.
Thank you.
Council, are there any other questions? May I have a motion to approve O R oh seven dash twenty-four?
Second. Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
O R oh eight dash twenty-four, an ordinance by the Troutwood City Council repealing chapter one-five-one employment provisions of the Troutwood Codes of Ordinances, and enacting new chapter one-five-one employment provisions and declaring an emergency.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Every city president coming in with their commentary on repealing chapter one-five-one, one-five-one, you apply for business to Troutwood Code of Ordinances and enacting new chapter, uh, one-five-one.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, council, citizens, and staff. Um, I'm standing before you to request changes. Some of, um, housekeeping measures, a couple of years ago or a year ago, council voted to include Juneteenth as a recognized and paid holiday. Holidays are listed in this ordinance, therefore we need to add this as a holiday. Um, secondarily, we desire to curtail issues that could be abuses of some of the previous policies we've had in place. Specifically, with regard to holiday pay, um, if a person calls off the day before the holiday, they currently could use sick time, then get holiday pay, and then come back to work. The idea behind the benefits is to reward employees for good behavior and just general good practice. It should not be that you're rewarded for poor performance or poor attendance. So we're asking that you allow us to include the provisions that a person must work their scheduled day before and their scheduled day after the holidays in order to receive such provisions. And I know many of you will say, that's the way it is where I work, because it's a, it's a generally accepted principle. Um, next is the vacation schedule. Uh, we have revised, made revisions, um, that are in accord with the Ohio Revised Code. For us, many of our employees who have joined us in the first year, they were only getting forty hours of vacation in a year. The O R C says, um, years one through four, a full-time employee should get eighty hours of vacation. So that's just two weeks. And it really just is a change with that first year. This would help us with retention and recruitment and put us consistently in line with the O R C. And lastly, we have provisions regarding injury leave. This is a very serious issue that can be easily abused. We want to avoid such abuses. Currently, the, um, policy states that a person who is off work with an injury leave will receive ninety days of paid time off without accessing sick leave, vacation, or personal time. Ninety days is a long time. That is the same as at the M L A, which is a twelve-week period. This addition includes a part-time employee. For a part-time employee, you typically do not have them off this many hours and this many days. Additionally, because a person is not accessing their personal, um, banks for leave time, that means I can have ninety days off with this provision. Now, I come back and say, I'm still unable to return to work, so I want to use my sick time. After I use all my sick time, I'm still not able to come back to work in any capacity. I'd like to use my vacation time. This is an abuse, and we want to prevent those types of things. One of the purposes with workers come is to try to rehabilitate injured workers and get them back to work. and get them back to work as quickly as possible, even if it's in a restricted capacity. We would like to limit this to 45 calendar days for full-time employees and 30 calendar days for part-time employees at the discretion of, first of all, the supervisor and HR certifying this injury. It's also important to note, there were no requirements for the claim to be certified. This could have been due to someone's own horseplay or their own negligence. That type of behavior should not be rewarded. We want to shore things up and make sure we're good stewards of citizens' tax payer notice. One last thing is, in here, we also have, we're a small city for S for staff. Some of our departments consist of one person. Sometimes their needs or the demands of the job don't allow them to take as much of their time off as they should to just, you know, convalesce. We would like to give select management personnel the ability to cash in one week of vacation time. This also limits our liability when people retire and also the carryovers that are on our books for finance. Those are the provisions that we're asking council to go through. It's a lot to digest.
All right. Now that, Council, do you have any questions? Or you want to address any, Councilmember Moore?
Deputy City Manager, when you talk about staff and employees being injured, has that been an issue within our departments?
I would say I do have a couple of cases that give me concern right now. And if the HR staff were not as aggressive with exercising our legal rights, yes, this could be even more serious because, you know, as you know, these types of things are cancerous. One person does it, they share the information with another person, hey, this is what I did. Hey, this is how it works. We want to prevent those types of things.
Yeah, and one other thing, you mentioned that it's at the discretion of HR, but you would change it so that full-time employees would get 45 days, is that correct?
They may get up to 45 days. Again, it is up to HR because we determine if the claim that has been submitted to us is likely to have resulted from activities that are work-related. We talked to the supervisor and witnesses. We work with our managed care organization and our third-party administrator to determine if this type of injury is likely to have resulted from the incident described, et cetera. So yes, HR is heavily involved right now with workers coming.
Are there any exceptions? I know that folks do get injured at work, especially the nature of the work. We have police officers, we have firemen, we have folks that, you know, risk their own lives to save ours. And I just want to know, are there any exceptions to departments or occupation or individuals?
It's all based upon the type of injury, the information presented to us. And by the way, most of our claims are certified by HR. Most people are the issue. I'm trying to safeguard for some situations that I see trending as an emerging pattern, and we want to be proactive with that. So typically, we don't have an issue, but things do arise. And we want to plan beforehand so that I'm not coming to you saying we've got a huge issue.
So is that a yes on certain exceptions or is it a no?
I wouldn't call it an exception. It's just that we review each case on a case-by-case basis. And if the parameters are, well, I'll give you an example. We had the officer who was involved on the 35 incident. Of course, everything was approved. There was no problem. We certified that claim. And in fact, we're surprised when the officer was ready to return to work on light duty and asked the question, are you injured? This is correct. So we would not be hard-nosed. We would exercise due diligence and ensure that certain claims make sense.
And I guess, just for clarification, that certain claims make sense. So if we had this in place when that happened on 35, instead of having the 90 days to recuperate and recover, that officer would have only had 45 days?
That officer would have had 45 days, but he didn't take 45 days. So again, it's always the bell curve, as you're familiar with. It's not the 80% of people. This officer is exceptional. He's in that 80%. He got back as quickly as he could. So, and that is the experience we have with most of our employees.
I just hate to see folks punitive measures for everybody when it's only a few.
It's kind of the way life happens. I mean, it's why we have CEPA laws, it's why we, I mean, pretty much everything is, it goes along those bell curve lines. Additionally, the City Manager does have the discretion to extend the leave if necessary.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes.
So is it an exception?
That's already in there.
Okay, in place. So the City Manager can extend?
Yes.
Based on the situation? That answers my question. Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Moore?
Four issues. Number one, is our policies that you're introducing and the changes consistent with practices of other cities of similar size?
Yes. Yes, they are. We work with other HR councils in addition to doing our own research. And yes, our policies are actually very generous. Most don't have these provisions.
Of the policies that we have, you mentioned the City Manager having the discretion of extending leave of absence, injury time, recovery, et cetera. There are other avenues that an employee can take. Should they disagree?
Absolutely. An employee can always appeal a decision. Additionally, if it is a workers' compensation situation and truly the employee or their representative feel that they need more time, et cetera, they could go through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation System itself and go through the temporary total disability process.
Does the Civil Services Commission at any point in time become involved?
Not typically with that. Civil Service is typically involved with the promotion, demotion, and things of that nature. Correct, correct.
And then the last, final question is, while a person may be offered, as you proposed, 45 days, was 90, and then they take sick leave time, add to that, then they take vacation time, add to that, during that absence, are they still accumulating sick leave and vacation?
They sure are, sir.
And you consider not permitting that?
You cannot do that under F M L A. So this is where you get into what's legally considered the Bermuda Triangle. Sarah's smiling because she knows I'm telling the truth. You can have an injury, which is a workers' compensation part of it, but because I am injured, now that also triggers the A T A. So the city has to work with them for reasonable accommodations. While that is in place, it can also qualify as F M L A. So I can have all three of those things in place at the same time.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking around. Anybody else have any questions? This was a lot to digest.
I understand. We tried to provide everything necessary in the City Manager's executive summary, and I hope people were able to read those bullet points to make it digestible.
What, what last question, my lady? It just entered my mind, have we reached out, or do we have any sense of the position of unions that are in existence in Trotwood?
Have we covered it with the union? I am not going to cover it with union. I don't want to give away all my management rights.
Okay. So we really don't know how it will be received until the next negotiations? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think we've covered it. Are there any other questions? May I have a motion to approve OR 08-24?
That's an emergency, Mayor.
As an emergency.
Thank you.
So let me repeat that. I'd like to ask for an approval of OR 08-24 as, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor, I make a motion to, make a motion in regards to OR 08-24 as an emergency.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
OR 09-24, an ordinance by the Trotlet City Council amending the 2024 wage scales adopted by ordinance number OR 37-23 to add a part-time non-union position and declaring an emergency. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We are looking at a part-time non-union position and declaring an emergency. This is in accordance with the fire departments program for growing our own firefighters in housing in the city of Trotwood. And the Deputy City Manager will explain more about that.
This is so exciting. As you know, our fire chief and deputy chief stood before you a few months ago to tell you about our newly implemented explorer program and our collaboration with the high school to get E M T services and classes into the high school. We held that for our first endeavor, and we have two high school students who have passed those courses. We are being innovative and proactive, and we're doing everything we can to grow our own first responders in this city. And so we are asking you to allow us to add this E M T B position, this part-time, to our scale so that when these two students pass the state test, we can hire them.
Are there any questions, Council? Did you have? Okay. Councilmember Moore, that's fine.
As typical, when someone applies, there is a review board, and you go through a whole series of questions, answers, and psychologicals, and, you know, the whole, yeah, the three different areas primarily, before you decide to either hire or not hire. What steps, when these people take a high school course or one that we oversee and administer, one of those typical oral, psychological, written, et cetera, interviews, background checks, what are those steps would still be in place to assure that this community is qualified applicants and employees?
Absolutely. Great question. So first of all, we always still do the background check, we'll be doing the driver's record check. They would have to undergo a fitness for duty, like the school, make sure they could do those types of things. And also, we do drug testing, psychological testing. And that nature is reserved for full-time only. That is where we get to the psychological trainings. These, if they pass the state exam, which is part of what would determine their merit for the employment, then we would move into those other background reviews to determine their suitability for employment. But we can't do any of those things until we first have the position on the books. And so this is a preliminary step. We may or may not hire them depending on if they pass all of those criteria, but we need the position there in order to move forward.
And the schooling, I want to make certain, you were talking about firefighting E M T?
This is E M T. Right now, they're not firefighters because they haven't, first of all, they had not graduated high school yet. So they couldn't go to firefighter school. All they could do at that time was the E M T training.
Is our course that we're currently doing, and I know is new, is it in line with what Miami Valley Career Technicals?
Yes, sir.
Is it in line with what they do?
Yes, sir. We have worked very closely with the Miami Valley Technical Training. And I have Deputy Chief Chad Matt Interfier with me, who could tell you a little more about this.
Thank you.
You may, Mayor, Council, City Manager?
Deputy City Manager, Staff and Citizens and Attendants. Yes, this course is actually being taught through Singularity Unity College. This is the same nationally accredited E M T course that any individual would take, be it through a high school course, through a C T C course, or through private enrollment in Singularity Unity College. It's called by the same instructors, to the same standards. They're just doing it in a remote location versus through the airlock. Exact same testing, exact same state requirements, just a partnership.
That's exciting. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Are there any, before, are there any other questions? Any council members? Any comments?
I think this is great. And I think that other people are going to take notice of what we're doing here in Trotlet, and this is a, this is a major step. And I do appreciate the things you've done to get this on board.
Are there any questions from Council? May I have a motion to approve OR 09-24 and declaring an emergency?
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page, if I could just add for the record, the last two ordinances were presented as emergencies so that they would go into effect immediately. They were noticed, just like every ordinance per the charter, those were still done. It's just a matter of making sure they're implemented immediately versus waiting at the expiration of 30 days as normal ordinances do.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to close the public hearings, please?
Make a motion to both the public hearings.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Gales?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes. Karen, could you read resolutions?
R 24-46, a resolution by the Trotlet City Council extending the moratorium up through and including December 31, 2024, on the acceptance of applications for and the issuance and processing of new permits for the building, development, expansion, or improvements, maintenance accepted, of 3-4 family dwellings and multifamily dwellings in the city of Trotwood.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, this resolution will allow us to extend the moratorium. It's currently in place up to, including December 31, 2024, while we update our land use policy. So we're asking for that extension, the city.
Are there any questions, Council?
Karen, I have a question.
Has one more? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. City Manager, can you, can you explain this in detail along the lines of the pros and cons?
Oh, you mean the moratorium? Okay.
Of this particular?
Yeah, what, what, what the council was talking about is a moratorium. Moratorium means during the timeframe- Moratorium means during the timeframe of the moratorium that nothing can be done with regards to multifamily housing until we look at our land use policy, decide how we want to afford as a community. So that, that's, that's number one. So number two, the pro of it is that it gives us an opportunity to review our policies while we're looking at how we want, the terms can be looked for in the future. The, the, the con to it is this, that there may be developers who may want to pursue multifamily housing, and they can't do it right now until our moratorium expires. So that's, that's the pro, that's another challenge.
And, and we're extending that moratorium right now, right?
Yes, we are. We will be extending to December 31st of 2024, to the end of the year.
End of the year, has it ended?
I believe the moratorium would be, would end in July, I believe, this couple, next month.
So it's going to end next month?
Yeah.
July of 2024?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're asking for an extension till the end of the year. Yes, mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, any other questions? May I have a motion to approve Resolution 24-46? That's actually taken, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion here, I can't hear her, Gales. I have a motion from Councilmember Gales, so give me a second. Councilmember Gales? Councilmember Moore?
Oh, I didn't second. She started.
Councilmember, Council, Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Page?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Do we have any older, new business out here?
Madam Mayor, I have none, thank you.
Are there any comments? Quirky council, do you have anything else?
Madam Mayor, I have no announcements.
Council members, do you have anything to say? Councilwoman, Gales?
I would like to thank the Tralwood Fire Department who came to my house and put up smoke detectors. They put up so many. They assessed my house. I thought I was getting one, and I had cleaned up for that area. But they assessed my house, and they put up quite a few. And I, I was very pleased, and I think all Tralwood residents needs to take advantage of that. They come in and assess your house and make sure that you, you can be safe if a fire comes. And Major Bowman was who I called, and he, he, well, I was a little slow in doing what I was supposed to do, but he kept right on it. So citizens, take advantage of that. I mean, you get brand-new detectors, and you get a great assessment of your house. You even get a, a folder that tells you how you can escape from your house. It's fabulous. Take advantage. Thank you, Fire Department.
Do we have any other council members that can make?
I'm sorry, I'll make a comment. I do second that, and I agree with that because I guess it was determined that a fire detector is best in every bedroom of your home. So they come in and assess and make you safe. And that is a great thing to know, that our firefighters are working to do that. The other thing is to remember, we're in the month of June. It's time to engage with your neighbors. Madison Live is first concert will be here June 29th. So hopefully, everyone will come out. I know the neighborhood watch associations are meeting. I know my particular work, one of them, and one of, and one of the associations in my work are meeting, come out to those meetings so that you know what's going on directly in your neighborhood. Also, that helps you know who your neighbors are. That was a big topic of concern that came up, that some of the neighbors or some of the residents did not know who their next-door neighbor was, or who the neighbor down the street on the corner was. And essentially, I understand, people don't want to knock on doors as they used to when people move into the neighborhood. But it's something that kindness can get back to, as you're comfortable, I should say, with your neighbors or with people that are moving into the neighborhood. That's how we look out for one another. We know how to contact one another. When you see something, say something. Because we all should do that for one another. We're one big happy family, and that's how families grow. That's how people want to come to our, our city because as big as our hearts are, we extend that from here to you, from you to us. We need to do that to our neighbors that are right next door to us. We say I love you, we say I care, we need to show that as well. Compassion is a great thing that I think the Tralwood citizens that we are known for, we need to continue to extend that. Thank you.
Any comments? Councilwoman Vaughn?
I pray that every citizen in the city of Tralwood keeps in mind with what is going on politically. No matter who you support, whether the president, the vice president, senator, state representative, whatever, and whoever, remember that we all have to be very thankful to the sacrifice of so many that have preserved their right to vote. Veterans in today's police department, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs are being killed in different states, in different cities. And it's because of someone, somehow, someday, some way feeling that. So what? It doesn't have to be my father, my brother, my son, my daughter. No one that's a, a member of my family. We all owe one another as citizens to look out for one another and to give thanks to those people that provide the sacrifice every day. I can't express how much and how sincere and how teary-eyed I get when I think about what's happening nationally. And I could go on forever and I won't, but please remember, we all deserve to be free, to think and do and choose. And there's people that paid the price for us to be able to do that, and thank you.
Okay. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I do have one thing that, I don't know if everybody had a chance to see the newspaper, our One Day Daily News regarding our housing values. But out of seventeen communities, there were four communities whose housing values have doubled last decade. Tralwood is one of those four communities. So I'm very proud about that. That, that means that this community is on the rebound, number one. So that's something to be proud of. So also, too, I wanted to address the lady that came up and talked about code enforcement over on Redonda. Make sure you see our people, and we'll follow up with you because we definitely take this seriously. But I want to let you know that we were, we run six-man teams out there cutting grass, and I don't know if anybody's been paying attention to the weather or let's go, man, we cut mine twice a week. So what's happening is, we're thirty square miles. So what's happening is, those guys were out there trying to get to every neighborhood and trying to get the grass cut. But understand that if you remember photosynthesis in high school, the grass is growing because we get a lot of rain and a lot of sunshine. The next couple of days, we're going to be out there hitting it hard because we know that we're going to get sunshine, and then it's going to rain again. So what I'm saying is, we got to be patient and understand that that's, they're doing what they can to get to all the grass, but it's incredibly growing at incredible pace. Matter of fact, we get a lot of sunshine for several days in a row because what that does, that stops the grass from going forward, okay? So I just want everybody to understand that. Well, you understand in that neighborhood, there is a significant amount of people that work on cars. We've been dealing with that, I have the data, I can show you that. We understand where they are, we sent them legal notices, we're trying to take them to court, but there is a high number of those people. I know that I get out in the neighborhood every day, I'm in that neighborhood every day, driving around, looking at the issues. So I don't want you to think that we don't know, we don't understand, because we're here, we live here too, and it's important to us, okay? Joanne, I want to talk to you about the issue, you got kids riding bikes up there. Our police departments in here and there in the back was talking about that. That's a community issue, we can solve that together. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Drop the mic, City Manager. Just, look, this is your mayor talking, and you know what? One thing I want to, to, to make you all aware of, this is the older American mind, and I think you would, would agree. We had an outstanding turnout at the library about information and things that are very beneficial for the, for the senior population, but also homeowners there. They were talking about tree cutting that AS will do when, you know, when the trees come over the lines and those things that are available to us. Though, and as a citizen of Tralwood, you have a right. As a citizen of Tralwood, you have a right to come to us and ask questions and to voice your concerns. That's why we sit up here. You voted us into these positions, and I want to let you all know, we are available. We have hours, you can call the office if you need to talk to any of us. And I want to make that plain and simple for you guys. I appreciate every week, every month, when we come out and we see people in the audience that are concerned, that actually live in the community and been here for fifteen, five, two months, twenty-five years, or thirty years. That means you care. We know that you care, and we care about this city too. So thank you so much for coming out. I'm going to invite you, come out and see Kung Fu Panda. That's going to be the best movie ever. Bring your grandchildren and everything, and let's enjoy the night together. But also, this concert series, I have been playing Melissa Morgan, Truth, and Blaine Jones for the past two months, ever since I heard that they were coming in town. This is something that we're doing in the community to bring us back so we can have a good time with each other. Please come out and support us. I also like to thank Mr. Willer for the, for the bike. We gave away three bikes, I do believe, is that not correct? Mr. Willer and everything. You know, those are, those are little things. So we're trying to affect and do things for the community from zero to ninety-nine and those above. Just know that we have your best interest in, in our lives when we make decisions up here on this stage for you. And I do appreciate you coming out. Since all eyes are clear, this is the end of our meeting, and the meeting is now being adjourned.